Okay, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the June 18th meeting of the Cumberland Planning Board. And we have one absent tonight, George Turner. First item is the approval of the minutes for May 28th. And with Christina out, we're just taking care of the of the motions that were made. And also, there is a recording. So with those provisos, I'll look for a motion to approve. Don't anybody speak up?
Well, I think the problem is you don't have a set of minutes to approve.
Yeah.
What we did, what we decided is that there were three motions to table.
Yeah.
And so that's done. And there's not, that's all there is to approve at this point, is that that was what took place last month. And you can, and you can re-
Enlighten me. So what are we, are we doing nothing?
For the minutes, right. You're really not doing anything.
All right.
There was no action taken.
Okay.
Last meeting.
Yeah, we're, for folks out in TV land, we're kind of working without a net, in essence, that Carla has retired, but she has, she has agreed to come in and work with us on three or four of the open items. And also, our secretary Christina is out on medical leave. So if we look like we're flopping around every once in a while, the short answer is yes. So moving on to, we have no site, staff site plan approvals. We have no minor change approvals. And so our first actionable item is a public hearing. So with the extension of approved subdivision, Heritage Village, known as Cumberland Foreside Village, located at US Route One in the Office Commercial South Zoning District, under a contract zone agreement. The applicant owner is Heritage Village Development Group LLC. And our representative is Craig Burgess from PE Acorn Engineering. So Carla, can you kind of?
Yes.
Let us know where we are on this thing?
Yes, I can. Last month, the application was what is now listed as our second agenda item, which is an amendment to an approved subdivision to extend the length of Skyview Drive. Okay? When that came up, one of our board members pointed out that he felt the approval of that subdivision, that there was a clause that said it had to be completed within two years, a standard condition of approval. That's a standard condition of approval for site plans, not subdivision. So in my memo to the board from a few days ago, I had proposed that a motion be made to table that, number one indefinitely, because it wasn't required. I think in talking with Josh this evening, he still thinks that it might be required. And I'll let him explain why that is. But once the board decides how we're going to handle number one, then you can move on to number two, which is just extending Skyview Drive.
But if we don't get number one solved, then we can't do two. Is that correct?
I don't, I don't think so. No.
Well, let's see if we can sort this thing out. This is kind of like Dracula. It keeps coming up and trying to get it with a wooden stake. So Josh?
Sure. So I think the issue is, if you look back at the April of 25th, 2023 minutes, we approved it subject to the expiration of approval, the standard condition of approval, and any proposed conditions of approval. I believe, and I think Carla agrees, that that expiration of approval that is in there is intended for site plan review. It doesn't necessarily have to be in there for subdivision review. But the way, and it's the expiration of approval that said, if it wasn't started within 12 months, then the approval is null and void, though they can come back for an extension. So my feeling is, we're now splitting hairs semantically, that we, like, what, the expiration of approval that we said applied was for site plan, really. And even though it was subdivision, and we included it in the subdivision approval, it really didn't, it really wasn't an expiration of approval. That, my feeling is, it doesn't hurt to just extend it. And then if it's not needed, it's not needed. However, here's, here's the other problem. The April 25th, 2023, when we reapproved the plan, because originally, we approved it in November of 2022, something got missed. It came back to us in April for reapproval. We never included, we never, we never voted on the motion. So if you look at the plat, that's part of that, and signed as part of that approval, it, under waivers, it doesn't say anything about the road width being reduced to 28, 29 feet. We approved that in November. I don't really know what a reapproval is. So I don't know if that supersedes the prior approval, or it doesn't. Now, we have the second one, that's for a further extension. And if you read all of that language, most of it is for the full 405-foot length. So sort of my feeling is, we maybe have a public hearing on the first one, table that, and then approve the second, not as a 60-foot extension, but as the whole length. But Carla raised that we didn't specifically put that in the public hearing, or in the public notice, but we did, you know, together, we had two items in the public notice that equate to the one. So kind of where I'm at is, I think the best way to do it is approve tonight the full 405-foot length, give them the waiver that, of road width. The only downside I see to that is that, you know, public notice didn't specifically say one 405-foot extension. It said one 350 and one 60-foot. That, but-
And I think Craig Burgess can speak to that, to satisfy your concern.
So that's how I feel, but I would welcome any others' opinion.
Other, Craig, do you have anything to relate on that at all?
Not on this item.
Okay, other, other board members?
Just one question. Carla, do we have any input at all from the public on these issues?
I've not had anyone communicate to me.
And we are going to have a public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, one of the things we could do is have the public hearing, then come back and do more with the board. Why don't we do that? I will open up the public hearing, and anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this, please come forward.
Are they speaking on our proposed way forward that Josh has?
I think we just-
Yeah, just-
Anything to do with it.
Anything, anything on this. We're not, we're going to try to get this thing resolved. So anybody from the public that wishes to opine on this hearing, no clamoring, that I will close the public hearing, and again, go back to the board. And Paul?
Well, it's, to me, this is, as Josh alluded to, semantics. If, I mean, the notices were sent out properly, correct? So whether it's one or two extensions, I'd have trouble being, being negative about, or being that critical of doing it that way. And if there's no input, I take it from what, from your point of view regarding why that was done?
It should be a total of 405 feet of roadway extension, from where the road currently ends to where it's shown on the plans that are in front of the board tonight.
So, and why, do you know, Carla, why it was done this way?
It may have been a presentation, within our documents, one, one application may have said 350 foot for the original approval last year. And then the new one said a 60-foot extension, adding up to a total of 410 feet. So it may be related to that. It's just, but what is in front of the board tonight with the latest documents that were revised in January 2024 are the most up to date.
Okay. Anybody else?
I believe that we did have one or two people that attended our last meeting spoke to this and asked questions and felt comfortable that they had their questions addressed. So in terms of a public hearing, even though no one's here tonight approaching the podium, we have had commentary from the public on this.
So?
So what do we do?
Josh?
Well, I mean, my feeling is, do we need to do, we need to do the things, we need to have the public hearing. My feeling is, we table number one, we have the applicant present for the full length extension. Then we can decide whether we take number one off the table and either vote it up or down, or we leave it on the table and deal with number two. I mean, and maybe even deal with number two first. And I will likely make a motion regarding the full 405-foot length of the extension. And then we, as a board, can vote on it. And if we need to go back to number one at that point, then we go back to number one at that point.
So let's do this. Let's temporarily table number one with the thought that depending on what happens with number two, it sounds like a bathroom discussion. Then we can go on from there. So I'll look for a motion to table.
Uh.
Second? All in favor? Okay. We'll move on to item two. An amendment to an approved subdivision, Heritage Village, known as Cumberland Foreside Village, to extend the length of Skyview Drive by 60 feet, located off US Route One in the Office Commercial South Zoning District, under a contract zone agreement and same applicant, Heritage Village Development Group LLC. And Craig is the representative of this also. So Carla?
Yeah. Again, as I'd written in my memo to the board, this amendment is the extension of Skyview Drive. And the application is complete, ready for approval, once the requested waiver for the road width is acted on by the board.
So Craig, any comments?
No, I can, I can do another presentation, if you'd like, for the public hearing, real quickly, if the board sees that necessary.
Does the board think that's necessary?
I don't.
I don't.
Okay, then let's go into-
We still got to do a public hearing.
So we have to have a public hearing. So I will open up the public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to express an opinion on this? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and go back to the board.
Peter, there is language in the findings of fact that referenced the length of the extension. So I think we ought to have a straw poll of how people want to handle this. Is everybody okay to do it? Because we're going to have to change the language, we may have to change the language in the findings of fact.
So would you suggest that we go through the findings of fact, and then, when we come to a particular thing, then cover it then?
Sure.
All right, Lorraine.
You knew that was coming.
And when everybody sees something that we need to revise, speak up.
Okay. Findings of fact. Number one, pollution. The proposed amendment for a road extension will not result in undue water or air pollution. Based on the information provided, the board finds that the standards of this section have been met. Sufficient water. A water supply is not needed for the road extension. Based on the information provided, the board finds that the standards of this section have been met. Municipal water supply. The subdivision will utilize public water. There is a water line that will be installed within the proposed road extension. Based on the information provided, the board finds the standard of this section have been met. Erosion. An erosion and sedimentation control plan that includes housekeeping procedures for maintenance has been submitted, and the plan has been reviewed and approved by the town engineer. Based on the information provided, the board finds that the standards of this section have been met. Traffic. The proposed amendment for the, for a road extension to one new site will not result in road congestion. Based on the information provided, the board finds that the standards of this section have been met. Sewage disposal. There is a public sewer that will be extended within the road extension to the site. Based on the information provided, the board finds that the standards of this section have been met. Municipal solid waste disposal. There is no need for solid waste disposal. Based on the information provided, the board finds that the standards of this section have been met. Aesthetic, cultural, and natural values. Letters are on file from state agencies indicating that the proposed subdivision will have no adverse impact on any of the above features. The board finds that the standards of this section have been met. Conformity with local ordinances and plans. The plan has been reviewed, reviewed and approved by the town planner, the town engineer, and town department heads. The board finds that the standards of this section have been met. Financial and technical capacity. Financial capacity. Preliminary project costs and financial capacity have been provided. There is a letter on file dated 12/14/23 from Gorham Savings Bank stating financial capacity exists. Technical capacity is evidenced by the use of professional technical consultants. The board finds that the standards of this section have been met. Surface waters, outstanding river segments. The proposed amendment for a road extension is not within the watershed of any pond or lake. Based on the information provided, the board finds that the standards of this section have been met. Groundwater. The proposed amendment for a road extension will not adversely affect the quality or quantity of groundwater. Based on the information provided, the board finds that the standards of this section have been met. Flood areas. The development is not included within a 100-year flood plane as shown on the FEMA flood insurance rate map. Based on the information provided, the board finds that the standards of this section have been met. Stormwater. A stormwater management report dated October 2022 was included in the application. The 350, so should that be now?
Is that the magic one?
405.
The 405? Should we change that to 405?
I would propose that we change it to 405. And do you know what the square footage of paved surface for the 405 will be?
Yeah, that's 14,020 square feet.
14,020?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we'll change the findings of fact to 405 feet and 14,000 whatever.
Twenties.
On, on that. Okay.
Stormwater.
The board approve, the board okay with that? Okay.
Yeah, okay. So I'll start over again for stormwater. A stormwater management report dated October 2022 was included in the application. The 405-foot extension of the road will consist of 14,020, 14,020 square foot of paved surface. The existing grassed, underdrained soil filter, GUSF, and detention pond have been constructed to take stormwater flows generated by the proposed road extension. The town engineer has reviewed and approved the plan. Based on the information provided, the board finds that the standards of this section have been met. Freshwater wetlands. There are no wetlands on the site. Based on the information provided, the board finds that the standards of this section have been met. River, stream, or brook. There are no streams on the site. Based on the information provided, the board finds the standards of this section have been met.
Peter?
Yes.
Before we adopt, or don't adopt those, we missed one thing. So I would like to make a motion that due to the unique characteristics of the site and the project, that we waive the 32-foot road width requirement and allow for a 28-foot road width.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Josh.
I will make a motion that we adopt the findings of fact as amended.
Here a second?
A second.
Discussion? All in favor? And we've got some conditions of approval. Is that correct? Preconstruction conference required. Amended SLODA permit to be submitted to the town planner prior to preconstruction conference. A performance guarantee in the amount and form acceptable to the town manager will be required prior to the preconstruction conference. All clearing limits shall be flagged and approved by the town engineer prior to the preconstruction conference. A blasting permit, if required, shall be obtained from the code enforcement officer. All legal and technical review fees shall be paid to the town prior to the preconstruction conference. And an electronic copy of as-built plan shall be submitted to the town planner prior to the release of the remaining inspection fees. Do we have anything else?
Can I make a quick comment on that?
Sure.
Sorry about that. I don't believe an amended SLODA permit through DEP is required for this project. We did review the DEP file over the last couple of weeks, and we found that the project isn't resulting in any additional impervious area from what was previously approved. So we don't believe a SLODA permit is needed. And we can-
I would propose we just amend number two to say the, an amended SLODA permit, if required.
Yeah.
That way, you're covered either way.
That would be great.
That's what I was going to suggest. Okay, so with that change, are there any other conditions of approval? Hearing none, then I'll entertain a motion.
I will make a motion that we approve an amendment to an approved subdivision Heritage Village, FKA Cumberland Foreside Village, to extend the length of Skyview Drive by 405 feet, located off US Route One in the Office Commercial South Zoning District, under a contract zone agreement, subject to the standard condition of approval and the seven conditions, the seven proposed conditions of approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Further, further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Opposed? So now, what do we do with, just with my ignorance, what do we do with number one? Just let sleeping dogs lie?
I think so.
I don't think it ever has to come off the table.
Okay. So you're, you're done?
Thank you.
Thank you.
There you go. Thanks, Peter.
The audible howl is that subject being beaten to death.
Thank you very much.
It needed to be done. Okay, so moving onward from that point, the developer for item three has requested that we table that. So I will look for a motion to table.
So moved?
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? So item three is tabled.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You might want to explain that that agenda item was to do with the Rusty Lantern.
Oh, that was the Rusty Lantern.
So people watching from home would know.
Oh, sorry about that. Yeah, this was the Rusty Lantern, and there were still some open items that needed to be done. But I think that that will come before us, probably at the July meeting. So item-
Peter?
Yes?
If, I don't know if anybody's out there, but if somebody came to speak publicly about that agenda item, can we afford them that opportunity?
Yeah, that's true. Did anybody, anybody come to speak on the Rusty Lantern? That's a good idea, just to save them the trip. All right, so we'll go on to item four. The major subdivision review, Mineral Springs Subdivision, a residential affordable housing development with 72 units total, including 36 affordable units, located at 77 Blackstrap Road, tax map R07 lot 53. The owner is BR Properties, and the representatives are Seavie and Mahar Engineers and Land Design Solutions. So Carla?
Yes, this is the second preliminary plan review for this project. It's been tabled previously. As I indicated in my memo, I believe that the plan is ready for preliminary plan approval. Major subdivisions require two-step approval process. First is for preliminary plan, which means that the board has found that most of the items are on track to being met for final approval. That will be coming probably in the next month or several months. This project is, at this point, ready for preliminary approval, as it's been drafted with the findings. with the findings.
Okay, so I guess we're ready for a presentation?
Peter, can I just say?
Yes.
Carla, there is no, there are things alluded to in the engineering comments and in the findings of fact, for instance, financial capability, that the backup isn't in our packet. It's another pretty small packet. I don't believe there's any requirement that we have a, some sort of minimum amount of information. We just need to feel that for preliminary approval, like there would be for final, we just need to feel it's on a glide path. Is that a correct statement?
I think you can ask the applicant's representative to, to tell you what that is, if it was absent.
Right, but all I'm saying is, I don't think a lot of the stuff that was provided made it into our packet.
And I thought that that was sent out to you today, the follow-up information. Did that receive? Okay.
Okay. I just never saw it.
And along that line, there was one item that was forty-five pages, one fifty and one five hundred and twenty-three. Five twenty-three was from a prior presentation.
The March.
What's the difference between the forty-five and the fifty? Because I've looked at the forty-five, but the fifty came later. Any idea? Anyone?
I defer to the engineer.
Okay. He can tell us.
We've submitted, well, first, my name's Peter Beagle, I'm with Land Design Solutions. I'm here with Dan Diffen from CV and Mahar Engineers, and Lisa Jacob from CV and Mahar Engineers, and developer owner David Chase. So we've, we've submitted, we've been before you folks, this would be our third time. The first time was sketch plans, we had the typical sketch plan application. The next time was preliminary, for preliminary review, and that was the, the big major five-hundred pages that had everything in there. It had the financial capacity letter, it had all those things covered. We were here, we discussed the project, we had some, some things to address. Our next submission, which would have been for tonight, was also for preliminary review, and we submitted outstanding items or items that had been readdressed, so that you didn't get another five-hundred-page packet that you just got. I think you got a cover letter, you got a stormwater report, you got the condo documents. So it was a much smaller package.
I don't think we got the condo documents. And do you know what the difference was between the forty-five and fifty page? Because I haven't, I've just noticed that, and maybe some of the documents were in the fifty and not the forty-five? Not sure.
I'm not, I, I'm not sure.
I mean, the only thing I've seen that came through, again, was Carla's cover letter with the findings of fact, the engineers' comments, and then the stormwater report. Other than that, those are the only three things that I've seen.
So, well, we dropped off hard copies and submitted PDFs for submission.
In terms of what was available to the public for the agenda items, it's the link to the fifty-page document, and there's also a link to the March nineteenth agenda, which is the big five-hundred-plus-page document.
Right.
Yeah. So those are the two things that were part of our agenda.
But I haven't seen anything as far as your response to the engineers' comments.
I haven't either.
Right, but again, I think that was sort of the intent of my question to Carla, that I don't think there's any sort of specific level of information that we need to have for preliminary approval. We need to have a, in my understanding, we need to feel that the project is moving forward appropriately such that we can, it will be ready for final approval when we will have, when we would need all of that information. So-
That's absolutely right.
I, I don't think we need to hold a preliminary approval for this one, we just need to make sure that all of the information goes, all of the most updated information goes into our packet for next, for the final approval, whenever that may be, so that we can review everything.
And I believe there's a proposed condition of approval that refers to that, sort of a catch-all condition, that everything, all outstanding items will be provided for final submission.
Okay, I, I think that's fair, a fair enough statement.
I could also add that the, the peer review engineer is, is here at the meeting, and they have signed off on the, our response to comments and the revised plans, which you folks all did yet, is here tonight, so he could confirm for you that-
Well, I think one of the reasons he's here too is if members of the public have questions, or the board, that we get an authoritative answer and not conjecture. So yeah, good. All right, with that, continue.
Okay, can I make the screen, can I make this the full screen? Is there a way to do that?
You close out your side tabs.
Yeah.
Here, let's see.
There you go.
There we go. Thank you. So I will start with this. So context map, just to let everybody know where we're, where we're at. The red line is our project parcel, approximately forty acres. My cursor is going down the, the main turnpike. We have Blackstrap Road going along this portion of our parcel. We have Upper Methodist Road going right along here. We have residential homes along, across Upper Methodist from us. We have a cemetery right here in this corner. We have an auto salvage yard right here. We have a residential subdivision right down here. We've got residential homes along this portion of Blackstrap Road with gravel pit behind them. We have the intersection of Blackstrap and Route one hundred right over in here. Route one hundred going down along here. We've got the Castle Rock subdivision, Rooster Ridge, and Lower Methodist Road right down here. So our projects in the industrial zone and the West Cumberland Housing Overlay District, there are a number, we've got to meet the requirements of the West Cumberland Housing Overlay District. I think one of the important things is the stated purpose of that district, because we're a little bit of a, not your typical subdivision that you see, and we got into that last meeting with the condominium approval and just the way that, the requirements that we have and the way that our housing is designed. The stated, stated purpose of that West Cumberland Housing Overlay District is to allow residential uses with greater density in order to create additional housing opportunities within the existing rural and industrial districts. These regulations are intended to encourage the development of affordable housing units by assisting developers in making the provision of these units economically viable while providing assurances to the town that the units will maintain a high degree of quality and will remain affordable to the target population over a reasonable duration of time. So when we were back, when we were here on March nineteenth, we were, gave the initial presentation, we have seventy-two single-family affordable, single-family detached dwelling units. We, it's a condominium-type development. I think we came up with the word house miniums, which you see used at times. I'm gonna switch here to my next, next screen. The, the house minium, you, you own your home, but the land around you, even though it's for your private use, the land, all the land around you is owned by the homeowners' association. So it allows for a, a, a more dense, a more dense development, and at the same time, you're able to own your own home. Questions raised at the last meeting by board members concerned groundwater, direction of groundwater flow, septic systems and ownership, buffering, open space, condo fees, pond drainage. A number of residents also spoke with their major concern being potential impacts to wells and drinking water. Some of the, the highlights or high points of this project, it's forty acres, currently operating as a gravel pit material processing yard, purchased by the applicant in two thousand nine, and it's been worked as gravel pit material yard ever since, as it is today. The project's proposed as a single-family home condominium-style subdivision, which means that the parcels looked at as one large lot. We have a front, rear, side setbacks from the parcel, the outer parcel boundaries, and then we have a front setback, which would be along the proposed subdivision road right-of-way. Open space, ten percent of the total acreage is required to be open space by the town ordinance, so ten percent of the forty acres is four acres. We're proposing approximately sixty-five acres of open space. All the green that you see here would all be open space. The only thing that is not open space is the, the, the road right-of-way and the white areas around the homes. The subdivision road would be designed to town standards, to be accepted and owned by the town of Cumberland once the development's complete. The proposed roads, as you can see, we connect to Blackstrap Road up here and Upper Methodist down here. Be a sidewalk on one side of the, the affordable homes, which are shown here in, in the orange. The affordable homes would be a mix of one-story ranch and two-story modified colonials without garages. The market-rate homes would be a mix of two-story modified colonials with one and two-car garages. All homes would have a full basement. There's a, an option for a twelve-by-twelve shed for storage on each one of these sites. You can, on the plans that you have, you can see that twelve-by-twelve shed has been placed on, on each, each little parcel. There are four fire hydrants located to serve this development per last, our last time here, discussion, one of the fire hydrants was relocated to this entrance by Upper Methodist for, to allow it to serve the Upper Methodist folks. Public water. The site will be served by public water. I think the town has accepted a bid to bring the water line across the bridge, and wherever it stops, our project will pick it up and bring it the rest of the way to our site. It's a sixteen-inch water main, and then we'll be bringing an eight-inch water main down into our site to serve the project. Sanitary sewer. Each home will have their own private subsurface wastewater system. This is a overview of the landscape plan, showing how the open space is broken up. We have the, the white area around the units and in the center, that would all be maintained lawn. We've got the, kind of the lime-green area, which is a limited maintenance area. That would be more of a meadowy field-type cover mode twice a year, keep woody vegetation out, but trying to keep maintenance for this development as minimal as possible. And then the tan area would be all, any disturbed areas, loamed, seeded. We have some trees proposed in there in certain places, but that would be left to grow up naturally into forest at some point in the future. As this project needed a Site Location of Development Act permit, that was submitted to DEP quite a while ago. That's the most scrutinized type of review for a subdivision project like this. That review is in progress. Dan can elaborate a little bit more, but I believe the stormwater portion of that review, we've heard positive remarks that that's what we're proposing is, is, is good. We're still waiting for comments or review of the septic systems, groundwater, among, among other things. The engineering peer review comments have been addressed and plans revised and signed off. The plans in this packet all reflected that, signed off by the town peer review engineer, with the exception of the question that was raised about sidewalks being needed along Blackstrap and Upper Methodist Road, and we did talk about that a bit at the last meeting. Our, our feeling is that the, well, Upper Methodist Road is a dead end, and we do connect with our sidewalk here, and we do connect, you know, back to Blackstrap here. So there is a way through there. These eventually will be public streets, public sidewalks for all to use. Blackstrap Road has a, an existing five-foot-wide shoulder, per the town definition, for a sidewalk, that, that constitutes a sidewalk, if you look at the definition. We've had a number of discussions with town staff and the peer review engineer, and one of the ideas we came up with that we'd like to propose is to provide a twenty-five-foot easement along the Blackstrap Road frontage, similar to Route one hundred, which would, and that easement would be to the town. So at some date in the future, when the intersection is figured out and, you know, the bridge potentially will be replaced sometime in the future, and there'd be a walking space on one side or the other of that, when that is figured out, this easement would be in place, and the town, if they desired, could put in curbing sidewalk, landscape, whatever they deemed appropriate, and that easement would be there to provide them with that space for that. Construction schedule. We anticipate that this will take between four and five years to complete, so we're hoping that as the project moves forward, there's a way to incorporate that into any approvals at the appropriate time, just so we're not caught up short with a one- or two-year approval and four- or five-year project build-out. I think at the last meeting concluded with the planning board requesting a peer review of the hydrogeologic report, and that is, I let Lisa Jacobs and speak to that, and let Dan speak to different engineering questions. Thank you. Lisa, you want to?
All right. My name's Lisa Jacob. I am a principal at CV and Mahar Engineers, and I'm here to give an overview of the hydrogeologic evaluation and the preliminary site evaluation, and as Peter mentioned, some follow-up from the town's peer review. And the background, these are all things that, that you know that have been well-covered, seventy-two single-family homes on a common parcel, individual subsurface wastewater disposal systems per home. It will be supplied by public water, and it is within a mapped significant sand and gravel aquifer according to the Maine Geological Survey. And the, the yellow that you see is, is the footprint of the significant sand and gravel aquifer that Maine Geological Survey maps in this area of town. The project site is within the aquifer protection overlay. The residential subdivision is allowed upon a positive finding that, that it will not negatively impact water quality, groundwater quality, and we would rely on state guidance in the permitting and construction of, of the project. And in this case, the state guidance would be with respect to the subsurface wastewater disposal rules and the SLODA, the site law. and the SLOTA, the site law, uh, rules. And the project design, uh, the focus of this study that, that I'm here to talk to you about is, is specifically the site hydrogeology and the potential groundwater effects for, uh, with respect to the site, subsurface wastewater disposal. And so within that context, um, again, seventy-two single-family homes, each would have a one-thousand gallon septic tank and a subsurface wastewater disposal field. And the Elgin Indrain, uh, disposal field is what's proposed. Most of them will have a twenty by eleven foot, um, footprint. The main rules suggest two-hundred-seventy gallons per day design flow based on, uh, for a single-family home, a three-bedroom, single-family home. And the sum of design flows of nineteen thousand four hundred forty gallons per day. With these homes on a common parcel, the, uh, there is an increased requirement of assumed, uh, flow per day per bedroom. So a hundred and twenty instead of ninety gallons per day and an increased lot size requirement. And that increased lot size requirement is met by the forty, uh, forty acres of available land. In our investigation summary, we looked at soil conditions. The USDA, um, mapping has, uh, these soils as Hinckley Lomi sand, uh, Hinckley soils. It's a Lomi sand soil, it's excessively drained. The Maine Geological Survey, uh, has mapping of marine ice contact delta deposits. These are sorted and layered sand and gravel, so very well-drained, um, high hydraulic conductivity soils. And we know that it's a Maine Geological Survey mapped significant sand and gravel aquifer with moderate to good potential for groundwater yield. In this case, it's greater than, uh, ten gallons per minute. And a CVN Mahar licensed geologist and licensed, uh, site evaluator observed soils in test pits at sixty-seven of the seventy-two proposed subsurface wastewater disposal fields. And, um, and his, um, findings were in our December twenty-twenty-three report. There were modifications required at several locations and those included either removing fill or reclaiming, uh, an original site conditions with soils consistent with the Hinckley soil. So coarse-grained soils to, to bring up to, um, earlier, um, elevations. And then our investigation summary, uh, from groundwater. We installed and surveyed five temporary pismeters in September of twenty-twenty-two. And these were, um, for the purpose of establishing groundwater flow direction and gradient. And they, uh, we measured water levels, um, continuously at six-hour intervals from December of twenty-two through September of twenty-twenty-three. And these were, um, data were valuable to establish the high and the low groundwater table. There's approximately a six-foot difference, elevation difference from high, high to low. And, uh, the data show a consistent groundwater flow direction southeast toward the turnpike. I'll have that on the next slide. And the grain size analyses, um, we used grain size analyses to estimate hydraulic conductivity. We, um, from soils, saturated soils below the water table. And hydraulic conductivity was estimated at a range of twenty-six to four-hundred-and-nine feet per day. There's an average of one-thirty-five feet per day and a geo mean or the central tendency of seventy-five. And here's a, an, um, figure out of our December twenty-three report. Not sure if you can see me moving around, but, um, north is to the left and groundwater is moving, um, from lower left to upper right. So generally southeast across the site and towards the turnpike. And the preliminary site evaluation was also done, uh, to evaluate the suitability of soils in and in the vicinity of the subsurface wastewater disposal fields. And the licensed site evaluator also looked at, um, setback distances required for first-time systems. And those setbacks included but aren't, aren't limited to the, the list you see here. Public and private water supply wells, water supply lines, water bodies, drainage ditches and property lines. And there, and the, the details of, of, um, of those setback requirements and, um, and, and the, um, and the evaluation are in the December twenty-three report as well. And we conducted an assessment of groundwater quality influence, so the potential for groundwater quality influence. And, and again, this is, this is specific to the subsurface wastewater disposal. And, uh, let's see. What do I want to tell you? We used MODFLOW, which is a numerical model that was developed by the U, United States Geological Survey. It's a well-documented and widely-used tool, um, in the industry standard for simulating groundwater flow. And it requires inputs of observed and mapped geology and precipitation and recharge. We used hydraulic conductivity and gradient of, uh, one hundred feet per day. We selected this, um, as it was in, in the mid-range of the, of the, um, of the estimates from our grain size analyses. It was also in between the, the average and the geo mean. And it also best fit the observed groundwater elevations and, and reasonably simulated groundwater flow conditions within the range of, of, of the, um, of our estimates. And, um. Primary concern for water quality with respect to subsurface wastewater disposal is nitrate. And so really the, the focus of, of the MODFLOW model was to predict what the nitrate concentrations are going to be at and outside of the footprints of these subsurface wastewater disposal fields. We used a baseline concentration of one-point-eight milligrams per liter or parts per million. And that concentration was from a, a groundwater sample that we took in September of twenty-twenty-two. And we used, uh, forty milligrams per liter as a typical concentration in domestic wastewater. And that's, that's a pretty, it's an accepted typical concentration. And using MODFLOW in this way wa, is, is a bit of a conservative measure because it, uh, the model is predicting post-development nitrate concentrations based only on dilution. It doesn't take into effect other potential, um, uh, reasons why nitrate concentrations might decline. They could be due to microbial activity or to plant uptake or, or other factors. This is, so this is, this is a conservative measure. And the, the big picture is that bottom bullet. Through our, our modeling, we simulated maximum post-development concentrations between two-point-one and three-point-five milligrams per liter. And that is compared with the state drinking water standard of ten milligrams per liter. And the next image is difficult to read, of course, at this scale. This is a, a clip out of one of the figures from our December twenty-three report. The outside contour that you see here, the, the orange, the orange lines are contours of predicted nitrate concentrations in groundwater. And each of, you can see that each of the homes has a, has a simulated wastewater disposal field. And each, each of them, we, we used the, you know, we used the inputs that we discussed. And the, the model as, as built based with inputs of observed geology and mapped geology. And the outside contour in each of these cases, you can see a one-point-eight maybe is visible to you. That's the baseline water quality concentration. You can see that the concentrations can be quite, uh, the, the, uh, contours can be quite closely spaced right in the, in the bull's eye, um, right in the footprint of the wastewater disposal field. They decline quite quickly to the point that maybe fifteen or so feet outside of the footprint of the wastewater disposal field, we've reached baseline concentrations. And, um, and, and those are, are generally, um, you know, close to the homes and not in, in most cases, close to the property boundary. All right. And then the last few, um, things I have to share with you are just, um, results of a peer review. We had, as, as we've talked about, the, um, the town's peer review engineer coordinated an independent hydrogeologic assessment. And that hydrogeologist, um. Independently arrived at largely concurrent findings. They used different methods and they used different inputs. And all of the, their methods and the differences are outlined in, in their memo. And their conclusion though is really quite similar. So their, their findings were, um, nitrate concentrations between two-point-one-one and three-point-four-eight milligrams per liter. And that compares quite favorably with our model predicted two-point-one to three-point-five, um, milligrams per liter of nitrate concentrations. In all cases, less than the main drinking water standard of ten milligrams per liter. They concluded that the proposed project will meet the compliance levels for subsurface wastewater disposal. And, uh, they additionally requested some investigations and testing for confirmation. And so we had a chance to, to meet and discuss, identify, and, um, outlined a scope where we would install two soil boreings to a depth of fifty-seven feet below ground surface. And, um, or to hy, hydrogeologic refusal if it was above that. And that would be either bedrock or a clay layer that would impede the flow of groundwater. And sample soils every five feet, classify the soils and submit two soil samples from each soil boring for grain size analysis. One from the upper saturated part of the aquifer and one from the lower saturated part. And, um, that, we've, we've done the, the field work and the assessment and provided a memo, uh, to you all to, to, shared with the town and the peer reviewer last week. And the work can, confirmed the initial findings. The hydro, hydraulic conductivity ranges, um, estimated from, from the supplemental, uh, supplemental work were from fourteen-point-five to three-hundred-and-six feet per day. And I've jotted down. Twenty, um, compared with the initial, uh, assessment of twenty-six to four-hundred-and-nine feet per day with an average of, of one-thirty-five. And, uh, the maximum nitrate concentrations, um, from subsurface wastewater disposal fields is very consistent with initial, um, model results. And so at this point, we anticipate, uh, concurrence from the peer reviewer, but he's not, uh, he, he won't be available until, I think, the end part of, um, end part of June. And so. We've reached the end of my news for you. I'm happy to answer questions if you have them or I can turn it over to Dan.
Why don't we wait till Dan?
Yes.
Finishes and we can.
Oops. Let me get out of Dan's way.
Usually you save the best for last, but I see in this case, we decided to save the, uh, the least interesting topic or the, this most straightforward, I think, which is around, um, stormwater. So we presented to you last time, stormwater out here, closed storm drain systems, catch patients, all within the roadway. All draining to one gravel wetland. When we, when we were in front of you in March, we had a large portion of the site, um, that actually drained out and around our gravel wetlands. That was because DEP had given us an initial, um, finding that we could use what's called the redevelopment standard for gravel pit. They have since come back and said, we need to use a new development standard. So under redevelopment, we could treat fifty percent of the project. Now we have to treat ninety-five percent of the impervious area and eighty percent of the developed area. So since you've last, um, seen the project, the stormwater design out here has only gotten more robust. We're capturing with some of the, uh, off-site paved areas that are just going to have to drain to our gravel wetland. We're actually capturing more than a hundred percent of, uh, impervious area added to the site. So that's sort of, uh, really, um, some positive effects of that has, it shows a, a larger reduction in peak flows coming off the site. I think in the twenty-five-year storm, our, uh, existing peak flow is somewhere, something like five and a half CFS. It's now going to be below one because the gravel wetland will capture and drain that out over, um, a longer period of time. So that's the major change. I also wanted to point out that, um, the test pits that were dug as part of this, um, the septic field investigation really dictated the grading out here. So we talked a little bit last time that the road is several feet higher than existing grade. And, and that was set based on the required elevations of the septic fields. So that those could be high enough above, uh, high groundwater to get the appropriate amount of treatment that's, uh, shown in our model. So, um, this project is, from a stormwater standpoint, mostly all tied together. Goes to a large pond, a cool gravel wetland that won't stay wet. It should have some really neat, um, plant species in there that can support bird and habitat. And it has been shown to, uh, support pollinator species too. So kind of a, a cool side effect of not using a wet pond, using something a little more natural, a little bit more, more green. We did have, um, some really positive interactions with the, the town staff to try to work through all the comments. And we've got to a point now where we've addressed all those comments, which had to do with separation of, uh, pipes and houses and easements and, and all that, and depth of storm drain. So we've reduced the depth of the storm drain on the road to less than ten feet or, or as even as low as eight feet or less for future maintenance of the infrastructure. That was a concern of the town. And we provided, um, on these plans and I think on Peter's plans as well, you can see a, now you can see a drainage easement through, uh, the property that, um, is overlaying with what might become public infrastructure. So, uh, happy to answer as many questions as needed on the, on the engineering, but that's sort of what's changed since the March, uh, presentation. I think that wraps it up for, for us. Unless Peter has.
Couple of other things I was hoping to, um, run through if I could. That's just, uh. Just to revisit, uh, the overview of these, uh, the images that we, we had prepared based on our, uh, based on our plan. So these were, uh, these were all done. I think we've, uh, included images, uh, I showed some last time and, and in the, uh, in the submission. But, uh, right here, you can see, you know, the pond and, and Blackstrap Road right there. We're, this is the cemetery. Here's, uh, Upper Methodist. So you can kind of see how the, uh, the houses lay out. Another view, we're, we're over the pond now. You can see the, uh, kind of the rec, the basketball hoop swing set, the, the trail, um, homes. This is down at the, uh, the entrance, uh, the Upper Methodist Road entrance, looking down our, our entrance drive. There's the, the road that branches off to the left, our little subdivision road to form that little eyebrow. This is up on the other end, uh, you know, you're in the, uh, you're in the subdivision. You've got the little, uh, median sidewalk roadway, kind of trying to give a feel for what it will be like to, uh, live, um, in the side, in this, uh, in this development. This is the, um, you can see our little sheds. This is that, the interior, uh, circle area with the houses, um, uh, around the perimeter. It's that, uh, green space in the middle. Here's the, kind of the rec, recreation area. There's some, some multi-purpose grass lawn area for playing around, swing set, basketball, trail system. This gives a little view of, um, you know, you've got, uh, folks have their lawn behind their house. Then we go to the, um, limited maintenance area. And then we've got the level of, you know, letting things kind of grow back to, uh, let nature take its course uh, with our, uh, uh, trail, uh, winding, uh, winding through there. Every house has, uh, access to walk out your back door and get into the, uh, the open space. Get on the trail and, and, um, take advantage of that. So, um, that's, uh, I just wanted to show you those images when, uh, last time.
Okay. Well, thank you. I guess we'll open it up to the board for questions. Go ahead, Josh.
I guess I'll just ask them and you can decide who is the best person to answer. In the police chief comments, he noted, and, and there may have been back and forth. I know you and the, and the town engineer went back and forth on a bunch of stuff and maybe it's already in there, but.
Stop signs and stop bars, uh, they are shown on, on the plan. I think maybe there's just so, um, so much stuff on there and the scale of the plan that they were missed, but.
And then the removal of vegetation that is recommended by the.
Yeah, absolutely.
I figured you're going to be fine with that. That may be a condition of approval, but I don't see any issue there. The, uh, letter from Gorm Savings Bank, I believe, uh, mentions a two-point-five million dollar cost of infrastructure roughly. Is that a reasonable number? You showed the walking path. We had a prior discussion about the, uh, about a sidewalk along Blackstrap and Methodist. Does the, does that path, is there a way to kind of go all the way around the subdivision? And, and I guess the only other, the only thing I would say is if it doesn't, then, okay.
Yeah. So that black line is the, uh, is, is the, um, so you can be on the sidewalk, get on the path here.
Right. So, so there is a way to kind of walk around.
Yeah, it all loops. It's all connected.
Great. Sixty-seven of the sixty, of the seventy-two subsurface wastewater disposal sites were investigated. Is there plans to do the other five?
There is. There, a couple of them needed, uh, reclamation up to a certain, um, up to a certain level. There is one that's obstructed by, I thi, I think there's a building in place and a couple had standing water at the time that the test pits were done. So yes. So, yes.
And then, we, because you also did the hydrogeological survey at 181 Gray Road, which is the, why am I blanking?
Rusty Lantern.
Yes, Rusty Lantern site. And the, the groundwater flow almost went a hundred and eighty degrees, is that?
Yeah.
Kind of correct? I am not a hydrogeolo- geologist. My assumption is there is no concern, there is no added risk of that, of those waters coming together for any pollution, but I guess I just wanted to verify that.
That's correct, yeah. Each of these areas has a slightly, had, will have a slightly, or, or less slightly regional, or local component to groundwater flow. There's also a regional component where they're, they're generally headed, that, you know, water's generally headed to the sea, but in, in each of these, each of these, we, we use local instruments to, to identify the specific flow under the parcel.
Okay. There's also a comment from the fire chief about Portland Water District, talking about maybe another valve needs to get, have, does anybody know if that ever got answered?
It, it has not yet, no. But I'm sure has the development of that six inch main.
It's on a list somewhere.
It's, it's on the, on the radar, so.
Great. And Carla, just, all of the proposed conditions of approval on our, at the end of our findings of fact are lined through?
Right, those are conditions that I didn't want to completely get away from, because they'll be there for final approval.
Right, I, I mean, we don't even really need to.
You don't need to go through them, the only.
Because we're not even gonna do the standard condition of approval for that, are we? Because wouldn't that just be final?
Nope.
Okay. I'm done, thank you.
Yeah. Paul?
So, I had some of the same questions that Josh had, but, so, basically, you're saying that all of the engineering questions that we've read, I mean, I have a number of yellowed areas that I wondered about, those have all been addressed?
Correct.
From, okay. So, just one other question, there's a, what is the significance, I think it was alluded to earlier, of the letter or the input from Cliff Lippett on June twenty-eighth? There's a comment that he'll be back in Bangor, and get, we'll get back to you on June, after June twenty-eighth. Does that have to do with the hydrogeologic study?
Is the, the, the peer reviewer, the hydrogeologic.
Okay, that's what you were referring to at the end.
That's exactly right.
Okay, thank you.
Yes?
Yeah. Are we going to be requiring, I guess this is a question for the board as well. There was a comment made that we should require post-construction testing of wells around the development to ensure that they were still safe. And I think that comment was made by Bill Shane at the last meeting.
It was.
Yeah, this was the, Mr. Cool Yard, and my understanding was that there were gonna be a couple of test wells that were gonna be done, is that correct?
At, surrounding homes or?
Yeah.
So, we discussed that with Bill Shane and, and staff, and I, in my, the submission cover letter, we talked about doing a, a testing program on wells within three hundred feet of the southern border.
Okay.
Okay, okay, and how about post-construction?
That was post-construction.
Okay, okay, so that's in line with what Bill was talking about?
Yes.
Good, okay, very good. Yeah, and that will be for a certain period of time?
Pre and post, I'm sorry.
Pre and post?
Right, yes.
And for how long? How long does that go on post, is that? How many years do you do that?
We would wait till the, the project is gonna, is gonna be a four to five-year build-out.
Okay.
So, we would do, before we start, and then I would say we would do when we were all over, at the end of the, say, five-year period.
Okay, and what about af- oh, the build-out, so that means that there would be?
So, right, so everything would have been built, the initial houses would have been there for, you know, potentially five years. So, I, I would think that you would be, if anything was happening, you would be seeing it.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't know if that's enough or not, we might wanna ask the.
We'll, we can, we can put our heads together and.
Okay, with the.
Come up with a proposal there.
With the other, okay. And then, there was a comment made by, I think it's our engineer, our town engineer, on landscaping plans, said it is unclear, this is thirteen on landscape plans, it is unclear whether the current unreclaimed areas of the property from former gravel extraction operations will be reclaimed as part of this project. If the current unreclaimed areas are not addressed as part of this product, project, the future homeowners association could be subject to significant costs. We recommend that the planning board consider requiring the developer to reclaim all portions of the property in accordance Section 490-D of the MDEP statute, so that the HOA are not responsible for these costs in the future. Now, I, I'm confused.
We're reclaiming everything, everything, everything that's disturbed, we're regrading, we're loaming seeding, we're reclaiming everything out there.
Okay, so that comment was not accurate?
Correct.
Okay, okay, I mean, it looks, everything you showed us.
Yes.
I didn't see any, anything like that, okay. Okay.
Lorraine?
Nope, I'm good.
So, I was reading the, the hydrological report, and it looks like that the groundwater table is somewhere between two hundred and forty-nine and two hundred and fifty feet above sea level. So, my question is, how high above sea level are the roads and the houses?
Oh, I, I'm certainly not gonna be able to remember off the top of my head, but as I mentioned earlier, what we did was, we took the findings of the investigation we did between September of twenty-two, or December of twenty-two and September of twenty-three, where we were measuring groundwater levels in those piezometers. And if you remember correctly, last summer, it was the wettest year we've had in decades, and groundwater levels were as high as they've been in decades. So, we took that groundwater elevation, which is the two forty-nine or two fifty at the highest point, and we set the bottom of our septic systems above that, I think it's four feet or so is the, the minimum depth from gr- high groundwater table to the bottom of the septic systems. So, all of our septic systems are at least four feet above high groundwater, and our building footings and elevations have all been designed so that our, our footings for our, our basement are above groundwater as well. So, the road out here ranges from anywhere from two sixty-six to two fifty-six.
Well, I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to get at is, what is the, for first floor of the house, the sidewalk or whatever, where the house is sitting, what, how many feet above the water table does that sit? Twenty feet, thirty feet?
Not, not twenty, no, no, probably, yeah, five to eight feet, depending on, at the lowest point.
So, if you've got a basement that's.
Sorry, the road will be at five feet above, then it'll, it'll go up into the house a couple feet, and then our houses are sitting up above the, the groundwater table.
But how, you know, the groundwater is two fifty, what is the height of the, that the house is sitting on? What I'm trying to get at is that, i- if it's twenty feet above and you've got a, and you've got a nine-foot basement, of the, you've got about ten feet, which would seem to be pretty safe, but if you're, if the floor of the basement is only two feet above the groundwater level, it, when you have the thousand-year, and my also understanding was that you had to raise the level of the pit, is that correct?
Yeah, throughout the, throughout the pit, we had to, we had to pick that up in order to get above the groundwater table.
How many, how many feet did you have to raise that?
Sure, so if you see down in through here, we have about elevation two fifty-two, sort of in the larger flat area. We have kept our lawn area down around two fifty-three or so, that's lawn. Our houses up here are up around two sixty, so the finished floor of that house is, is, I think is around two sixty-one or two sixty-two, so we're about.
That's what I was looking at, so you've got, and, and that's with you filling it in, so that if it's two sixty-three, and you've got a, you've got a nine-foot basement, you've got about a, a four-foot difference between the bottom of the basement and the groundwater, is that, is that correct?
I'd say that's a fairly accurate representation of the, the standard out there, yeah.
You know, Bill Golden Book stuff.
Yeah, and we do have, there will be foundation drains around each of these, these houses that will.
And what does, where do the foundations, foundation drains go into?
They would tie into the storm drain system out here.
So, if you have that proverbial two weeks of rain, where you might get seven inches of rain, how, how big a change does the water table do for a prolonged period? Is it just so gradual, or, or there, can, can there be a significant decrease, increase in the size of the water table over a prolonged two-week period?
I mean, if we're getting seven inches of rain, the majority of that water is running right off the surface, because the ground only has so much absorption capacity over a short period of time. So, we do our stormwater models, part of our calculations are an absorption rate for the ground, depending on the soils and the vegetation, and then beyond that, that maximum absorption, it all just runs off, so.
So, the groundwater during a prolonged period of rain is not gonna increase significantly?
Well, I mean, depending on your definition of prolonged, I mean, last summer, when we had months and months of rain, it certainly did go up, and that is the limit we're using here, which is one of the, one of the highest groundwater levels we've seen.
Well, I, I mean, my only concern is the fact that you have the, you know, you have that thousand-year storm, and all of a sudden, you've got seventy-two sump pumps, so, so it sounds like you've made the calculation, so you're building it up high enough above the water table, so you're not gonna have a situation where you've got seventy-two flooded basements.
If we have a thousand-year storm, we're all gonna have flooded basements, that's extreme, for sure, but I, I understand where you're going. Yeah, we've built, I would say, a conservative depth to groundwater, and we've used, the basis of that is the highest groundwater we've seen in probably thirty years, so we feel very confident that we've, we've taken every measure possible without adding a substantial cost.
I appreciate that, but I, I think, and it's good to have facts, because of, you know, the usual conjecture out there, well, I was down in that pit, and you could have done the America's Cup races in it. So, to, I would rather counter this thing with facts, numbers, and everything than conjecture that they're gonna have America's Cup races in their basements, so, thank you, I think that, so the next thing, Carla, has the, has our town attorney reviewed the, the condominium, homeowners' agreements?
Yep. These are them, they're thick. For final approval, they will have had a sign-off from the town attorney on all of the elements of the agreement. The current plans have already been reviewed by Ben McCall, who's the town attorney, who worked closely with the town manager and David Chase to determine what the level of affordability would be, and how that was all written into this. So, the answer to your question is yes, it will be for final approval, that will be in place.
Okay.
Excuse me, have we seen those? I don't recall.
They were in this original packet that was sent in.
March thirty.
And a revised version in the last, April thirtieth submission.
Yeah, April thirty is where I had them. This is a copy of mine, I'd like to have my paper copy.
So, we have, and I guess the last meeting, there were no real, as far as those, those four houses that were on Methodist Road, that all the buffering, they were, they were fine with the buffering, so that issue shouldn't be there. Do we have any buffering issues? There was one homeowner that was on the other end of it, and did, did we resolve that?
Um, that, hey, can you help me get this to scale here, Dan? That, I think you're talking about the residential home up by, on Blackstrap, right?
Maybe.
It was very high up above our.
Yes, yeah, that was the one.
Yes.
So, we took care of any issues there?
Well, he's, I, I think that most of that property is, the high property, it belongs on his lot, and we are down below him.
Okay. All right, well.
You said you needed a really long tree, tell the tree what you couldn't do.
Yeah. So, I guess, is, is everybody ready for me to open, go to the public hearing? There's, I, we did get one letter from the public, so I'll read that first. This is, this is to Carla Nixon. Dear Ms. Nixon, I'm writing this letter in behalf of the members of the Cumberland Rifle and Pistol Club, which is located directly across Blackstrap Road from the proposed Mineral Springs subdivision. We are not your typical NIMBY, and are complete supporter of this development, it certainly likes, it will start to fill a housing need in the area. We would like to request that there is some kind of a note on the subdivision plan identifying an active, since nineteen forty-seven, indoor shooting facility. We host many competitive indoor shooting events throughout the year, as well as offer safe professional instruction to area shooters. Cumberland Rifle and Pistol Club is small bore only, so there is not excessive noise, but we will know, but we all know how poorly gun clubs are received by new neighbors who had no idea that this was in their area, so we would like to take this step in an effort to prevent this from happening. Carla, is that something that we need to do? I don't.
No. I, I don't know.
No, it's just buyer beware, I guess, that.
Indoor.
Yeah, that, it's indoors, so.
Yeah, I just don't know where you would make such a disclosure in, in the documents.
Well, I think this day and age, everybody's sensitive to firearms, so I think the person was trying to be proactive. Okay, that being said, I'm ready to open up the public hearing, so anybody from the public that would like to ask questions or make a comment, please come on up.
How's it going? Clayton Cop from West Cumberland. I got a couple of questions. The hydraulic report looks good, the nitrate looks good, what about normal pollution? Salt and sand, I think that needs to be looked at in the wintertime, and especially with that pond. The biggest thing is, the people in that area are very concerned about the water, the drinking water. I don't see the reason to have the pond, it's your direct artery into the drinking water. If somebody polluted that pond, it could, it could flow right down in, and there's no reason other than aesthetics for it.
Any question, our peer review, can you address salt, sand? Some engineer, not from Amtrak.
It should be a restricted salt, sand use area, in that.
One of the engineers can answer that?
I have no idea, I'm just asking.
I can try, I mean, it's.
It seems like a logical thing.
Doug Reynolds with Gore Palmer, with, with a peer, peer engineer for the, for the town. Again, what we talked, what Peter talked about earlier with the testing of the wells prior to development and then post-development, again, that, that can be, definitely be done relative to a, an incident polluting that pond going to the other ones, that's your answer.
No, but it, it's a valid question, that, when we do the hydro- hydrological studies, you've got roads, does salt, sand figure into your calculations?
It's a, the pond's about an acre and three-quarters.
It's big, I mean.
Uh, I guess, I, I, you think?
What's the purpose of it?
Uh, well, aesthetics and, uh, material.
So, I, I get the aesthetics, but the material, so the, the developer's asking the town to pay millions of dollars to get the water line across, and he can't use the material, bring material in?
Yeah, yeah.
You're gonna use material on the site?
So, the, the roads are gonna be public roads, so it's gonna be up to the town to, uh, to monitor what they use for salt on all these roads, Methodist Road, uh, Blackstrap Road, the main turnpike, uh, it's not just me, I mean, it's a big, it's a big area that the aquifer, uh, that, the pond is specifically to generate native material along with aesthetics, but generate native material to build us, to build the site up.
Right.
So, I, I don't, I don't see, it's all green space around the pond, I mean, I don't see an event happening in a residential subdivision that's gonna cause any kind of a, you know, point source pollution to that particular body of water, any more than, uh, you know, Forest Lake.
Right, any other questions?
Yeah, um, what's the, uh, the house is heated by? Are they gonna be petroleum, or is it gonna be natural gas? Is there anything we can put in the, their HOA covenant that says they can't have heat and oil, a petroleum-based furnace, um, just in case an oil barrel lets go? I mean, you could possibly have twenty thousand gallons of heating oil sitting on the bottom of that pit. Heating oil, I mean, in barrels.
Well, so, a basement, if, hopefully, uh, um, Summit runs gas, that's the plan. I, I don't have control of that, if, if Summit Natural Gas extends their, uh, gas lines like they say they're going to, uh, all the houses will be heated by, uh, natural gas, a single, uh, oil barrels, three hundred and sixty gallons, so.
For the seventy-two.
So, but all seventy, it's not practical to think that all seventy-two, uh.
Even if one, if one lets go.
Okay.
Well, that's all over West Cumberland.
I mean, I don't know, I can't argue that, but.
I picked a bunch of Goldens up in the state of Maine over the last five years, they've had to dig down at least twenty feet to get the material out that was polluted, for the DEP.
Any other, uh, any other comments? Any other comments?
Just to use the pesticides on the, the lawns and stuff, are we gonna have TruGreen in there every week? Is there anything in the HOA covenants for that? To cover?
Fair question.
To cover that, I mean. I just, I'm just worried about the pesticides in the ground and.
Legitimate.
Stuff like that, and, uh, and the other thing that we really haven't talked a lot about is the PFAS that are generated through the wastewater. I know sixty years ago, nobody really worried about nitrates, PFAS is a big thing now, and it's just gonna get bigger and bigger going down the road, um, if the board could think about that, that's all I got.
Thank you, uh, anybody else, uh, like to address, uh, yes, ma'am?
I, Lanny Dobson.
Oh, just, uh.
I'm off of, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm Lanny Dobson, I live right at the bottom of Upper Methodist Road, and I'm concerned about a couple of things, and you've addressed some of them, but I want it to be brought up again, um, I think we need to do something about sidewalk on Upper Methodist and Blackstrap, I don't think it's fair to the town, even if we give them an easement to eventually build a sidewalk, why would that burden be put on the town, especially since we're already gonna be disturbing all of that area anyway? So if we're disturbing it and doing the work now, in the long run, it's gonna save us, and when they come out onto Upper Methodist Road, this area, if you've ever been up there, we're big walkers, there's always somebody walking their dog, there's always, now you're putting seventy homes, and if you think they're not gonna come out into this beautiful end of town and walk from Upper Methodist to the church, back down and around, we're kidding ourselves, and we're putting seventy houses with, say, at a minimum of seventy people walking up and down this road, it's, it's just a nice little quaint little area, but even now, when you drive down through, there's so many, I'm not kidding, so many walkers with their dogs, that you have to be extremely careful, so you get new people, new neighbors, I'm not so sure they're going to be as considerate about how they drive in and out of the area, so, I think, eh, at a minimum, uh, small sidewalk, curbing, or something on the Upper Methodist and that section of Blackstrap Road. The other thing I was concerned about that we didn't talk much about today was the Upper Methodist Road, the four houses that are gonna be facing Upper Methodist, what is the setback gonna be for those four units? Do we know?
Those, um, those houses are set back, uh, as shown on the plan, approximately thirty-five feet from the, uh, right away.
Okay, and the opposite side of the street, there's seventy, required to be seventy-five feet, so is there a reason why we can't make that match the neighborhood with seventy-five feet pushback?
Um, our, we're operating under a different ordinance requirement.
I don't.
We have flat spot up by the road, and then we, uh, then we dip down into the pit, so that's our opportunity for those, uh, for those homes, uh, up top by the road at the, um.
I'd still like it to be considered if this here can match the aesthetics of the neighborhood, which is the seventy-five feet on the opposite side.
Thank you.
And then the other one thing was, Clady is very correct about the water, um, we had all that rain recently, and I know that my son has addressed it periodically, we had all that rain recently, and we had an awful lot of water coming from the top down our driveway into there, so, I know that, that's a very important piece, but again, the, some kind of curbing and sidewalk, we're already gonna be disturbing that area, why not do it now, instead of putting the burden on the town later on to do it? As they said, they were gonna give an easement on Blackstrap for the town to eventually do it, but that's gonna put the burden on the town, and the townspeople to come into you and say, can we go ahead and do that? Anyway, that's my two cents, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Regarding the, her first question, will the trail be open to the public?
The, uh, the trail will be in the homeowner's owned open space, so the sidewalks will be open to the public, but the trails would be, uh, would not be.
Okay, any other, uh, any other comments?
One more question, um, Carla mentioned back in, uh, a year ago, almost, it seems like, um, this entrance off Methodist Road, is there any way that can be a one-way-in? Only, it was for emergency vehicles? Can we make that, because it, when cars are coming out, their headlights are gonna be shining right into those houses, um, either that turn the entrance, so it kinda turns up the hill, instead of dead, it tees right there, do that make it one, one-way-in, so cars come down Methodist Road, go into the development there, and then exit if they want to up on top of the hill?
Uh, I don't recall saying that, it, we're certainly pretty far along in the design process to, to require that, um, but I defer to the board if they feel that's a important thing.
Either that, we gotta do something to protect the houses on the other side with it, I mean, those people are gonna be blinded, headlights are gonna come in.
Typically, what's done in that situation, we had a subdivision out on Orchard Road that, that exact thing, they came up and they were, right across the street was a, a house, with the living room windows right there, and what the developer did was put up a fence, uh, so you look at it for, how can you buffer to, you know, protect that?
Angle it so it doesn't tee right in the Methodist Road, it kinda angles up, you know?
We have had the, the, the neighbors, uh, on, uh, Upper Methodist were at the last meeting.
My, my family owns those two houses, so.
Yeah, and, uh, they're, uh.
If there's something we can do to, to block the headlights, it, that'd be much helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd also like to correct about front setbacks, the seventy-five foot didn't sound right, I can't think of any district that would be that large, and there isn't one, the, the greatest setback, front setback in any of our districts is island residential, that's fifty-five, and then rural residential's fifty, so I'm not sure where seventy-five came from.
I may have misspoke, it's just not on that side, those four houses don't seem to be set back.
They are, that is correct, they're not as far back as the other houses, and as, as the engineer said, they're, they're here under different zoning requirements, yep.
Bob?
Good evening, Bob Vale, Cumberland Town Council, uh, one of the things that, uh, I'm looking at and have concerns of, uh, is the homeowners' association agreements, uh, we're looking at a proposed subdivision with half, half the houses being affordable, and so there's some concern on my part about how that affordability moves forward, and so, makeup of the, a board of the homeowners' association, how is that going to play out? How is the, uh, membership going to be allocated between, uh, members who are the unaffordable, and those that are inaffordable, uh, uh, how's that makeup going to be? The increases, the, uh, over a year, it's, it's one thing for a, uh, condo association to decide that they wanna, uh, uh, put some amenities in, or, or things like that, or they wanna set aside monies for, for upgrades, so I, I think that, uh, I'd, I'd like to see what that looks like, and I think for the board's level, I think this is a little, it's a little different, I don't know if we've ever had a situation like this, I'm trying to think of, of a subdivision where we've had a, a, a mix of homes, uh, and certainly, uh, you know, maintenance of the amenities, uh, that, that impacts everybody, and it plays out in the affordability of, of someone who's, who's, who's maxed out when he buys a home, uh, just to, you know, make that mortgage and, and as an affordable unit, uh, and then the homeowners' association fees ratchet it up every year, uh, so I, I'd, I'd like to see how that's, uh, gonna play out, thank you.
Okay, anybody?
David, do you wanna respond to that?
I don't mind.
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful to know your thoughts on it, it's a good, good question.
I, I, I think it's definitely a good question, the condo docs will require an eighty, eighty percent vote to do any changes for amenities or something like that, so you're gonna have thirty-six affordable, uh, units that have to vote on this, so, um. Trust me when I tell you, I've done a lot of houses for a lot of millionaires, and everybody's tapped, so, you know, uh, I don't see that particular comment being, um, too mu, too much of an issue, but, the council is gonna have to approve the condo, uh, affordability portion of the condo docs, so, the condo docs, well, the affordability portion will be, um, for the next, for the next thirty years, it'll, it'll have to basically be between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and forty percent of aver, average, medium income for the, um, Cumberland County area, and, uh, there, there's some, it's gonna be a hundred and twenty percent unless they don't sell, and that's gonna be negotiated with the council, so, you'll have your opportunity to, um, have a voice in that before it gets, but, even when the, we get the approval from the, uh, planning board, I'll have to go in front of the council for them to approve the affordability section, so, um, I, I think, I don't think it's, I know what your concern is, but I don't think it's gonna be an issue.
Okay, thanks, Dave, anybody else? Hearing nothing, I will close the, uh, public hearing and, uh, bring it back to the board.
Carla, we're gonna have to make a note somewhere that, that's gonna have to be like a proposed condition of approval, that the condo docs get further approved, 'cause when, when we do this, otherwise, we're approving those, the homeowners' association documents, so it will have to be, yeah.
Got it.
So, as I understand it, you'll approve the condo docs, which will be all peer-reviewed by the town attorney, with the exception of the affordability section of the condo docs, but I don't have an issue.
Yeah, I think it's just gonna have to be.
You've got one town attorney, so whether it's, you know, planning board or the council, he can have, yeah.
Yeah, staff can figure out how we have to do it, but generally speaking, if we've approved it, then we've approved it unless we add a proposed condition of approval, which would just be that, that the council approves the, whatever section. The only other thing I would ask of the applicant prior to the final is maybe take a look at, rather than doing a sidewalk along, uh, Methodist Road and Blackstrap, is perhaps, you know, could, could they put a path in, you know, sort of in that twenty-five foot, what's gonna be the twenty-five foot easement to kinda tie the entrance exit on Blackstrap down to the cemetery, and then from the entrance exit on Methodist Road up to the cemetery, so if people did want to walk off, not on the shoulder of the road, that they might have an option without, uh, having to go down into the subdivision, which doesn't sound like they would be able to, uh, and I know the topography there is maybe challenging, but if it's in the easement anyway, then maybe that would work.
Care to, uh, comment on that?
I don't, I mean, I, I would just say, have them think about it, but.
Yeah.
Comment if they want.
Uh, we, we can look at that, the topography is, uh, is challenging through there, and we're also trying to leave as much, um, vegetation as, um, possible for buffering, so we've got, got a couple of things we're gonna balance, um, the earlier comment that that will all be disturbed anyway is, um, uh, we're not planning on disturbing any of that, and, with our construction, um, which is down in the pit, the perimeter is remaining, um, uh, perimeter of the, the existing vegetation around the perimeter would be re, remaining as it, as it is, so, um, but we will, we'll look at what may be, um, you know, if there's anything that would be feasible.
Okay, yeah, I think.
Yeah, I'll just comment, I'm sympathetic to that also, I'm a inveterate dog walker in town center Cumberland, and when you get off a sidewalk, it becomes difficult.
Okay, anybody else, so do we wanna go through the findings of fact? Yes?
Ready?
Okay, uh, Lorraine?
Okay. Sorry. Findings of fact, pollution, there are no streams on the site, the parcel is located in a FEMA flood zone, Zone C, which is an area of minimal flooding. A soils and hydrogeologic investigation have been submitted by the applicant and reviewed by the town engineer, who has provided comments that need to be addressed. Based on the information provided, the board finds that the standards of this section have been met for preliminary approval. Sufficient water, the project will be served by public water via an extension along Black Strack, Blackstrap Road across the turnpike. Final approval from the Portland Water District is required. Based on the information provided, the board finds that the standards of this section have been met for preliminary approval, I'm sorry, I'm stumbling over a lot of words, I'll try harder, all right. Municipal water supply, the project will be served by public water via, oh, sorry, I just did that. Erosion, an erosion and sedimentation control report was submitted, the town engineer has provided review comments which are being addressed by the applicant. Based on the information provided, the board finds that the standards of this section have been met for preliminary approval. Traffic, a traffic impact study was submitted, the police chief has suggested that stop signs be installed throughout the subdivision, and that the clearing of vegetation on Blackstrap Road be done. Based on the information provided, the board finds that the standards of this section have been met for preliminary approval. Sewage disposal, a hydrogeologic evaluation was submitted, there are outstanding comments from the peer review that are being addressed. Based on the information provided, the board finds that the standards of this section have been met for preliminary approval. Municipal solid waste disposal, household waste and recycling will be collected curbside by the commercial waste company contracted by the town. Based on the information provided, the board finds that the standards of this section have been met. Aesthetic, cultural, and natural values. Letters are on file from various state agencies stating that there are no adverse impacts on aesthetic, cultural, and natural values on the site, the board finds that the standards of this section have been met. Conformity with local ordinances and plans, the plans have been reviewed. have been met. Conformity with local ordinances and plans. The plans have been reviewed by the town planner, town department heads, and the town engineer. There are outstanding comments that need to be addressed prior to final submission. The board finds that the standards of this section have been met for preliminary approval. Financial and technical capacity. Financial capacity. A statement of financial capacity dated 11/4/23 from Gorham Savings Bank has been provided. Technical capacity is evidenced by the use of professional technical consultants as outlined in the application packet. The board finds that the standards of this section have been met. Surface waters, outstanding river segments. None of the above features are present on the site. Based on the information provided, the board finds that the standards of this section have been met. Groundwater. A hydrogeologic investigation was conducted. The peer review hydrologist made comments which have been responded to by the applicant. However, the peer review hydrogeologist has not yet reviewed the response comments. Based on the information provided, the board finds that the standards of this section have been met for preliminary approval. Flood areas. The development is not located within a 100-year flood plain as shown on the applicable FEMA flood insurance rate map. Based on the information provided, the board finds that the standards of this section have been met. Storm water. A storm water report was provided, and there are comments from the peer review engineer which need to be addressed. Based on the information provided, the board finds that the standards of this section have been met for preliminary approval. Freshwater wetlands. A natural resources survey dated 6/14/22 was included in the application packet. This survey states that two wetland areas were identified which do not meet the minimum criteria for designation as a wetland of special significance under the Maine NRPA. All development will be outside of the wetland areas. Based on the information provided, the board finds that the standards of this section have been met. River, stream, or brook. There are no rivers, streams, or brooks identified on the site. Based on the information provided, the board finds that the standards of this section have been met.
Okay, so what's the board's wish?
I will make a motion that we adopt the findings of fact as written.
Seconded. Okay, further discussion? All in favor? And?
I will make a motion that we approve preliminary major subdivision review of Mineral Springs subdivision, residential affordable housing development with 72 total units, including 36 affordable units located at 77 Blackstrap Road, tax map R07 lot 53.
A second?
Second.
Here, moved and seconded. Further discussion? All in favor? Okay, we, so that, that concludes our hearings and presentations. Carla, what does, what does July look like?
I anticipate we would have Rusty Lantern back. The Skillens Greenhouse folks are proposing a new greenhouse, and that will be coming before you.
Excuse me, that?
Skillens Greenhouse.
Okay.
New greenhouse. Mineral Springs, oh, Dan, before you walk out the door, just curious what your timeframe, anticipated timeframe for coming back for final might be.
I would expect pretty quick, since it seems like we've addressed some of the, most of the major issues. So when's the submittal date for July?
It's a week from today.
Hopefully for July, but if not, definitely for August.
And so you'd be looking for a final approval conditioned upon the DEP.
Correct.
Approval. Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you all.
So, have we heard from either Harris Road or the school district?
And Harris Road has indicated that they want to come back in July, and I haven't heard anything from the MSAD. I was wondering if you had heard anything about that.
No, but I'll find out.
Okay. So, so you've got a lot of projects coming up.
Right.
Oh, my goodness.
Okay, anything else that the board has?
So, I won't be here for the July meeting. I apologize. I lost track of family planning, and I can't be here.
Okay.
So George needs to be here.
Don't run, don't run away, Bob.
I'm pretty sure.
Okay, anything else? Ready to hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Here, a second?
Second.
All in favor? Regent, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.